Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the slight delay. We have Councilman Marks online and we also have Councilman, we have everyone but Councilman Ertau, who is, will be joining us shortly. Okay, so the first item we have on today's work session agenda is going to be Councilman Marks, Baltimore County Flood Plane Ordinance, Bill 9724. Okay, we're going to delay that one. I think Councilman Marks may be detained for a moment, so let's go to, let's go to, let's go to Council Bill 105-24. And give me just one second to get to that. So 105-24 relates to special exceptions, special regulations for cemetery in the DR2. And we had a situation where there was a development proposed and a property was subdivided, but no development ever occurred. And now cemetery is, has plans to move to start an operation in that area, so it's a pretty benign use. It's going to be quiet, I can assure you. And so there's, there's an interest to not allow the, to, with, to remove the special exception in this area where the cemetery is when property has been subdivided. Do any of my colleagues have any questions, comments, thoughts? Okay, are there any speakers on this, Ms. Bel Castro? Okay. Next item, is Councilman Marks with us yet? Not yet, okay. Councilman Marks, are you with us? He may be on, but maybe not at a computer at the time. So let's move to approval of fiscal matters. Bob Smith, Director of Wreckin Parks, Amendment of Contract for the Maryland Association, Mano, Mano. Mano for us, it stands for the Maryland Association of Nonprofit Organizations. We call it Mano.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and Council members. As part of the reimagining Recreation and Parks Plan, Baltimore County Administration is assisting county Recreation and Parks and Nature councils to successfully transition to new operating model outlined in the plan. This requires each council to grow its organizational capacity. We are requesting to extend the contract, the contract project timeline from April 30th, 2025 to December 31st, 2025, and to increase the contract amount by 1,000, 169,125 dollars as outlined in the Mano capacity building proposal. Mano has successfully provided capacity building workshops for community organizations through the current Department of Planning Project, consulting services, capacity building and technical assistance for community-based organizations. The approval of this change order will allow Mano to design and deliver capacity building workshops and individual organizational coaching specific to the needs of the 44 Recreation and Nature councils, beginning in the winter of 2024 through December of 2025. And this proposal will include preliminary discovery work and overall project coordination, cohort training sessions, and one-on-one counseling engagements to cover items like board governance, risk management, legal compliance, fundraising, and resource development. So we're seeking approval for the extension of this contract, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we're going to go to Mr. Lawrence Richardson, who has two items before us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka, members of the council. The administration is seeking your approval for a contract with Dogwood Kennels LLC to provide long-term emergency canine boarding services for Baltimore County Animal Services. The contract will commence December 18th and have four one-year renewals with a total amount not to exceed 295,464 dollars. Under this proposed contract, Dogwood Kennels LLC will provide long-term emergency boarding of dogs housed by Baltimore County Animal Shelter, pending animal hearing board decisions or cruelty investigations as needed. Services will include housing the dogs in a secure, temperature-controlled facility with each dog in their own individual kennel and providing physical activity one to two times daily. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Mr. Richardson? Okay, you can go ahead and move on to the next item.
Next, the administration is seeking your approval for a contract with the University of Maryland St. Joseph's Medical Center for our cancer prevention, early detection, diagnosis, and treatment services. The contract will commence upon council approval and run through April 1st of 2025. Our estimated cost will not exceed 11,666 dollars for the entire two-year and three-month term. St. Joseph's will provide hospital inpatient services related to the prevention, early detection, and diagnosis and treatment of cancer for our low-income county residents. We estimate that the contractor will provide the services for roughly five clients annually. And I'd be happy to take any questions on that contract.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Richardson? Okay, hearing none, thank you so much, Mr. Richardson. And next, we're going to go to Seth Bluman.
Mr. Chairman, just as an FYI, Mr. Richardson also has Bill 10224 if, if you'd like to cover that.
Well, my apologies. Mr. Richardson, thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yes, I see.
Thank you. Yes, so the administration is also seeking your approval for supplemental appropriation in an amount of 17,000 dollars. This is for our community-supported agriculture grant. Diet-related diseases, including diabetes, heart disease, hypertension, and obesity are among the leading causes of morbidity and mortality in the United States, and it's disproportionately affecting low-income communities where access to healthy food alternatives is limited. This funding opportunity will support farmers in establishing a SNAP-eligible CSA program to provide healthy fruits and vegetables to residents to improve health outcomes. The project will include supporting farmers through the application process to accept SNAP benefits using the electronic benefit transfer, or EBT, payment system, and assisting farmers in developing SNAP-eligible boxes and linking SNAP-eligible families to farmers to establish a CSA membership. The goal of this project is to engage farmers with the intent of increasing access to fruits and vegetables to improve the health of families. For fiscal year '25, we'll be in a planning and engagement phase for the full rollout in fiscal year '26, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do any of the members, Councilman Ertau?
Hi, Director Richardson. The, this isn't the question on this item, but the last one. The Dogwood Pet Lodge, where, where is that located?
I believe Dogwood is right outside of Baldwin. It might be in Hartford County, technically.
Okay, is it, so it's near, it's near our shelter?
It's very close to the Baldwin Shelter.
Okay, so that's, that's what it's convenient to?
That's why it's convenient, it's proximity to the shelter, and it's a 24-hour shelter when we need to.
And they're, do they currently take all our dogs? Is that?
No, this, this is for our shelter when it's, when we're at capacity. So when we're having administrative hearings due to animal cruelty cases and we have a large intake of animals, we then have to contract with Dogwood in order for that overflow of animals.
All right, great, thank you.
And we're, we're not going to have to build, Councilman Catch, a wall or anything?
I don't think so. I think the facility is sufficient, I believe.
Councilman Catch, are you going to say that you're going to pay for the wall?
Are you going to pay for the wall?
We're going to build a wall and you're going to pay for it?
Build a wall.
That's a value, pay for the wall.
Okay. Now, how close is this wall to a home?
I'm not aware of a wall, Councilman Catch.
I'm not talking about a wall, I'm talking about a house.
The actual, I'm not sure the proximity, the proximity to residential area, but it's, it's been established for years. We've, we've utilized Dogwood since 2021.
Will you have that measured? I'm very serious. There's a county bill. There's a law. You know that.
Yes, I'm aware.
You're aware of it.
But this is outside, this is not at our animal facility.
It's what?
This is not our facility. This is the vendor, Dogwood Kennels.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, well, could you still do that for me?
Yes, sir, I'll look into that.
I mean, I, I mean, it's not that close to my district, I assume.
I'll have to find out.
Yeah, and if you would, please.
It's in my district, Council. It's not close to anything.
Oh, then who cares?
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I was just helping my colleague. It's in my district and it's not close to anything.
Good.
Closest houses probably, hmm, I don't know. 800 feet.
I don't know, okay.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. No, 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 keep.
I just wanted to, when this bill was originally introduced, the one that I did years ago, the constituents at my, I advised them to record the dog barking on their property. And I said, come in, play for the council till they can't stand it anymore, and then we'll get the bill and the wall, and that's exactly what happened. And I just don't want to have a Baltimore County resident coming in here and playing, I mean, the level was over 5.5 decibels. It was terrible. Really was. So I just don't want that to happen again. But it's your district, right? Not mine?
Yes.
Oh, who cares?
And I remember when they were playing the dog barking.
Yeah, yeah. That was my.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Director Richardson, on Bill 10224, I just wanted to take the opportunity, seems like a great program. It's also not a very large sum of funds, but would love to engage with you in a conversation and the department about social determinants of health and other resources that we might have inside and outside county government to help in, one, education, but also access to some of this piece that gets forgotten, which is about types of food people are eating. So just want to take that opportunity and let you know that I'd love to engage in a further conversation.
Okay, well, do I let the program know, Councilman? And this is really for the pilot. This is the initial funding for the pilot program to engage the farmers and get them trained on accepting SNAP. But I will definitely let the program know you're interested.
Yeah, and this, just in, inspired, reading through it inspired me to mention to you that I'd love to see and have that conversation beyond here because this plays into it, but love to see what we're doing and how we can possibly expand other services. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richardson. And Mr. Richardson, thank you for holding it together during an unusual line of questioning. Okay, next, we have Seth Bluman.
Good afternoon, Council. The administration is requesting approval of an amendment, contract amendment, between the Maryland Clean Energy Center, who facilitated a procurement on behalf of the county, and Siemens Industry, Inc., to continue to assess the county's electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The proposed amendment commences upon council approval and extends the contract by three months to March 31st, 2025. The maximum compensation has not changed, it's still 145,835. The county will provide the funding to Maryland Clean Energy Center, who will then compensate the contractor, Siemens Industry, Inc. They're going to be giving us a 60% submiddle by the end of the calendar year with a narrowed-down list of about 15 locations for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, again, all county-owned properties, and a final presentation and report in mid-February. We just needed some additional information after we provided them more parking locations of our county fleet. That'll just enhance the quantitative-based analysis and determine the recommended number of charging stations to go in for a maximum of 15 sites. So the final study includes electric capacity load studies, detailed cost estimates, and annual budgetary estimations for EV charging infrastructure. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bluman. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Bluman? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bluman.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move to Resolution 4724, sponsored by, I'm the main sponsor, and then we have six other members, five other members of the council as sponsors. And I guess the best way to describe what's been going on, we've been at this for over a year now, and I guess I would describe it, I would quote a Grateful Dead song and some lyrics and say, what a long, strange trip it's been. And what do I mean by that? Back in November of 2023, this council established a redistricting commission. That commission set out with its mandate to provide a report by March 30th, 31st. They held about half a dozen meetings, couple of public hearings, virtual, in-person, east side, west side, and they came up with a set of recommendations. They looked at expanding the council either, well, they looked at keeping the council at seven members, they looked at expanding it to nine members, to 11 members, to 13 members, and then they settled on, I think it was like 150-page record, it's pretty significant. Adam, was it 150 pages? Okay, my memory serves me correct. They had 150-page set of recommendations and reports, and luckily, they also included an executive summary. And so their recommendation was to have nine, to expand the council by two, have nine members. This council held more than, we had three public hearings, is that right? Three public hearings on it. It then went before the voters in November, on November 5th, and it was overwhelmingly supported by the voters, so we have a clear mandate on what our path ahead is. And what, moving forward, this bill, 40, this resolution, 4724, establishes a redistricting commission, and that redistricting commission would, let me just pull my data here so I'm accurate, so it'd be selected by one member of, from each of the council districts. It would be appointed and confirmed by January 21st, and they would, they would then prepare a recommendation by June 13th of 2025 on what the map ought to look like. And so this begins the process. I would be remiss if I didn't say this was a historic moment for Baltimore County. This whole process has been historic because over our 70-year, almost 70-year history from the beginning, when we became a charter county with only 250,000 residents, we've grown to 850,000 residents, and I would say about at least four times this was attempted, and it did not, it was not successful. And so for the first time, colleagues and folks that are listening in, we are going to expand the county council and will move into what I call the perfect storm of opportunity for women and people of color to gain elected office in Baltimore County. Why do I say that? Because at the same time that we have two additional seats, we also have public finance coming into place in 2026. So it doesn't cost an extraordinarily, extraordinary amount of money to run for office here in Baltimore County, specifically to council. And so there's been a lot of discussion related to maps and where the lines ought to be, and here we are today at this point, and thanks to Councilman Catch's amendment to the, to Bill 4724, which coincidentally has the same number, we are going to establish a, we hope to, if it passes, establish a redistricting commission. And as I said, by June 13th, they'll make their recommendation, and we will move forward as a county. We'll move into a new era for Baltimore County. And I have a number of co-sponsors, and so I'd like to welcome any of the co-sponsors to provide comment on this, if they'd like to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Catch?
The only thing I want to add is, as far as momentous, momentous changes to the way the council is elected and how many council members there are, when I first ran for office in 1974, that was the first election where council members were elected per district. Prior to that, okay, you had to live in, let's say, the third district, but you ran countywide. That's the way it worked prior to 1974. Then due to a petition that was initiated in 1973, 74, this change took place to elect council members per district, which, so that was the last change that was made that was momentous. And so it, it takes quite a bit of an effort to make changes like that. And so I just wanted to bring, bring up on the history of what's happened.
Thank you. Any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to say too, that while I missed the first work session, I think in, in between there, I jumped on board as a co-sponsor and happy to do so. The resolution in front of us is, well, we're mandated to do it, thanks to Councilman Catch's amendment to the original bill. This, I was happy to be a co-sponsor because not only are we keeping in the spirit of the charter as it's been amended by voters, but also as it was originally written to ensure that we have public input and open process related to how our maps are drawn. So there's almost no reason for me to not co-sponsor this, but I want to make sure that I also thank the advocates and citizens that have been actively participating and lobbying the county government to expand the council for years. Prior to running for council, for Council One, there hadn't been much discussion officially related to expansion of the council, but through the tireless efforts of residents that wanted to see change and wanted to see an expansion, the discussion of council expansion could not be ignored and could not be pushed under the table any longer. While it didn't take everyone the same amount of time to get to the same space to recognize that expansion was necessary, we've all gotten there, and now we will use the tools that have been presented to us in the charter to make sure that the process that we use to find a map and create a map that's presented to us includes everybody and fully represents the intention of us as council members and as our residents, of representatives of this district. Appreciate the opportunity to, one, co-sponsor, and also the opportunity to participate in a public process related to the maps that will inevitably come out to be our new nine-member council. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any of the other members have any comments, questions, or thoughts? Councilman Jones?
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. As anyone may know, I have not signed on to be a co-sponsor, and the main reason is I am very hopeful that this is not some big smoke and mirrors game, because the reality is, there is a map with nine districts on it that is law today. Am I not right, Mr. Secretary?
That is correct.
So there is a map that is law today. So absent some change, and there was an attempt to remove that map, and that bill failed as well. So here we are today with that map being law, and we're talking about creating a new map. Well, the reality is, if you don't achieve five votes, there will be no new map. And if the new map is significantly different or, or significantly different than the original, and it doesn't achieve the five votes, again, there will be no new map. And I'm afraid that there'll be some trimming around the edges, and there'll be a vote to say, hey, look at this new map. But the reality is, currently, there's a map that's law today that did not have public input and community engagement. So I'm hopeful that this is not all smoke and mirrors.
Councilman Jones, I can assure you that this is not smoke and mirrors, and I take exception to that comment. Here we are, legislators, and we were elected into this office to legislate, to take action, not to sit on the sidelines and be spectators or vote no against something that's very practical and that we believe in. And so here we are at a point in Baltimore County history like no other where we have this opportunity, the best opportunity in Baltimore County history for people of color and women to gain elected office with, with public finance coming on board and having two additional seats, and we're all opining on things we didn't participate in or things we voted no on, and we're, for political gain, we're twisting and turning, when the real practical matter is, we have an opportunity in Baltimore County like we've never had for people of color and women to gain elected office. And I take exception to all of this, well, let's turn backwards, let's not act, let's say we had, we, we didn't have a chance to participate in a map, whereas legislators, every one of us, all seven of us, had more opportunity than anyone else in Baltimore County to participate in this process. And everything else, anything else that's said, in my opinion, just my opinion, has been for political posturing purposes and not to gain, for benefit of people of color and women to gain elected office in Baltimore County. That's just my opinion. I know you have your opinion that it's smoke and mirrors, and we all are entitled to our opinion.
I'll have another opinion, Mr. Chairman. Women and people of color don't need you to look out for us. We can look out for ourselves. We can run for office and we can win. I was the chairman of the campaign finance committee that came forth and decided to have public financing. The point I'm making is, we're talking about a map that is law today while we're talking about a commission that's going to draw a map. And I am hopeful that the new map that'll be created by the commission, I never said I wouldn't vote for it, I said I'm not a co-sponsor. I'm hopeful that the new map will yield a map that is fair, a map that has been generated with community input and that we all can vote for. But I don't want to forget that there's a map in law today, right now.
Councilman Jones, thank you for that comment. Could you remind me, Councilman Jones, how you voted when this governing body, when public finance was brought before this governing body for vote? Do you recall how you voted on public finance?
Absolutely. How I voted for public finance?
Yes, when public finance, Mr. Secretary, you recall the year public finance?
I voted for it. I was the chairman of the, of the committee, I voted for it.
Mr. Secretary, would you mind pulling up that particular item? And if you could, if you could go through the roll call for that particular item?
The 2019 bill to establish the Fair Election Fund?
Yes.
It might take us a second, but we can look through it.
Okay, well, we'll move on with the meeting.
Mr. Chair, I, I think I remember that, that vote. I believe that Councilman Jones and I were the lone two votes against that bill, if I recall correctly.
Is that the one that put it into law or the one that established the commission?
Put it in, put it into law.
Well, it put it to the voters. It was a charter change, it was a charter amendment to put it to the voters, I believe.
Could we just have, Mr. Secretary, if you could read kind of the summary of, of the bill and then how the vote? Just so we're all clear.
Well, while, while Mr. Secretary looks that up, Mr. Chairman, it's unfortunate that we are, we're back at this same old argument where we have made progress. And Councilman Jones, you and I agree on many things, we disagree on other things. I was against council expansion, and if we did not create that map and reach that compromise, that referendum... expansion. And if we did not create that map and reach that compromise, that referendum would have never been on the ballot. So, there was a compromise that was reached amongst members of this body to do something that advocates have been asking for for years that personally I was against. But we worked together, and we created a bipartisan compromise to move forward because so many of you on this body wanted to move forward with expansion of the council. I did not, at that time, know if the advocates that were having petitions signed to go to 11, I didn't know if that petition was going to be successful or not. And we were under a deadline to get this, this item on the ballot. I certainly did not want to go to 11, but I compromised at 9 if we could come up with a map that looked fair. And then Councilman Catch had, made an amendment that said, we'll pass the map, but let's go back and look at the map, which I think is, I don't even know if I voted for, I can't remember if I voted for that amendment or not. But we've gone through this process because you, as my colleagues, wanted to expand the Baltimore County Council to open up opportunities for more representation, different types of representation in Baltimore County. And that's what we did, and that's the opportunity that's facing us. And we should recognize, and the advocates that wanted council expansion should recognize that this is a step in the right direction. This is a win. Take the win. It might be a win only by a field goal and not three touchdowns, but it's a win. And I also would like to express something that may not go over too well right now. As we've gone through this process, I've heard that the council is a bunch of white guys, one black guy, and that we're not a diverse council, and that women of color, people of color are not represented in Baltimore County. And I have come to take personal offense that I feel that I'm being told that be because I'm a white guy over 50, that I'm incapable of representing women or people of color, when I have represented my constituents as best as I can, no matter what gender, what race, what age they are. When people call our office, we don't ask what your ethnicity is, we don't ask what your political party is. If you have an issue that we can help with, we help with. So, we need to stop this divisive language that certain people aren't capable of representing other certain people. We're all Americans. We're all here trying to do the best that we can possibly do to represent the people that gave us enough trust to do a job for them. So, let's do that without this pettiness back and forth when we're actually making progress, progress that I was against, but then rethought it and worked it out with everybody where we could make the progress that you all wanted, wanted to make. And I think that we can do better than the pettiness that we've shown and that I have shown as well, I admit that I've done it as well, in this whole process. We can, we can do better as a body than what we're doing right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Hertel?
Here, here, Councilman Crandall.
Well, I would, great statement. Councilman Crandall and Councilman Hertel, I think, I stated, and I think all of us feel this way, that giving greater opportunity for people in Baltimore County, minorities, women, to gain office is not a performance evaluation on any of us. I think everyone here at the, on the DSC here does everything they can to provide appropriate representation to their constituents. It's really about just creating into the future greater opportunity, but not really a performance evaluation on any of the current members. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Young.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, because I, from Councilman Crandall's comments, I also hear some of the same thoughts, some of the same opinions, some of the same presumptions that I've had over my own short time on this earth and time in public service. I can't make anybody feel not offended by what they hear from other folks. I can only control my own response to what people say. I think we're all, also, especially up here at this day, as anybody in elected office knows, the, when folks contact their office, they're not always in the best, they're not always happy with us. They're not always coming because they want to thank us for something. But when it comes down to our performance evaluations, I've, over time, through my own experience with these issues, also, while other folks and some folks will take a look at somebody and say that you can't represent someone or that you're incapable of it, the vast majority of folks don't feel that way, knowing that we all come from, from districts that have their own level of diversity, that I've never, I have, and this is just me, sharing the dialogue, that I've never taken the want-to-expand or the, the actual experience of looking at a council and recognizing its racial makeup as some sort of indictment on me individually, but collectively, looking at what our county looks like and represents, and thinking about where do our residents want to see us in 10, 15, 20 years. And some folks might say that from a standpoint of politically, we want to be represented differently. Some might say that I want my individual councilperson to be different. But I can only control what I believe to be the case, which is, overall, this county is better served, sorry, could be served in a positive way just as much it's being served it is today with that opportunity related to our diverse populations, women and folks that live in our district. And I say that, and as this is me speaking in general, my own experience and life experience, that I ran for office originally thinking that I had an opportunity because of the neighborhood that the district represented, that I believe that I had those touch points enough and those relationships that I could make the argument that I could represent this area better than anyone else. There is a bit of ego tied to any of this. I did that because of how I was raised in Baltimore County and my side of town. I can understand, but never completely, fully know, that same thought process for a mother who wants to represent their district, who has to think about two jobs, or a single family member, or someone that has the same opportunity to run, but not the same economic opportunity, but also not the same district opportunity. Do I put my kid's experience and my family's experience on the line and their livelihood to run for an office that I know I can't win because the districts are drawn in such a way, not maliciously by us, but just in terms of who represents who lives there? Do I have a chance to win, and do I take two years, year and a half, a year, to put that as a priority over my own career goals and take a risk? And a lot of times, when it comes to populations that don't look like us, the answer is no. I have signed on, as I said before, because that this is a step in the right direction. I've already stated ad nauseam my concerns, which, you know, to say that there aren't political implications tied to it would be false on all sides, because there's conversations that we had during this process and after. I wish I could have engaged with you more during the entire discussion about the maps, but I know that wasn't possible. I wish we could have talked more and discussed where we were on these issues, but we couldn't. And I'm still interested in continuing those conversations now with this mandated, mandated by charter independent commission to redraw the maps. It's a process that we will all continue to engage in, but at the end of the day, it is delivered from a place of our residents and our population wanting to see positive change, not because of any individual inaction, but because of a collective action of who we are as a county. I've belabored enough. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilman Young.
And Councilman, just?
Councilman Crandall, then Councilman Catch.
And Councilman, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I heard what my colleagues were saying when I agreed to do the bill in the first place, and we reached a compromise.
Councilman Catch, and then Councilman Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in this situation today because, as you heard of the amendment that I proposed to the original bill, which would, that's why we are where we are today. The reason I introduced the amendment is, I did not think there was enough public input into the map that was contained in the legislation that put this issue on the ballot. Now, the reason why there wasn't public input was the time constraints. And I would not have voted for the bill originally if this amendment had not been adopted. Now, I want to talk about this particular council. This is the third council I've served on. This council that's up here now is, in my opinion, the best. I believe that each and every person up here is going to act on behalf of their constituents and are going to make the right decisions when it comes to the new map. I know that that's going to happen. I know all the people up here, and I have total confidence that they will do the right thing. And whether it's making a change here, there, or a totally new map, what comes out of this commission and what is approved by this council is going to be a better map than the one that's in the original bill. So, you know, as I said, I have total confidence in everybody that's here, complete confidence. And for me to say something like that takes a lot because I'm pretty picky. So, very picky. So, I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. I want to briefly talk about bipartisanship, and I'll echo what Councilman Catch says. Bipartisanship is important, and a key element of diversity is diversity of partisan representation, diversity of thought, diversity of political philosophy. And I think that sets us aside from other jurisdictions across Maryland and the United States. It was a bipartisan bill that put this charter change on the ballot. It will be a bipartisan commission that comes forward with a new map. And I think that's something that we really haven't dwelt on. The, the process that was reformed as a result of the charter change in November is much better than the current process. The current process really set no standards for how that bipartisan committee is, is put together. This process requires an appointee from each member of the county council. So, it's going to be a bipartisan commission, and I predict it will be a map that produces battlegrounds across Baltimore County. Now, I said this during the summer hearings, in many of these districts, a good Democrat would beat a bad Republican. The Republicans are outnumbered in Baltimore County. And there's going to be battleground districts created throughout Baltimore County. And I know you're going to hear from some speakers today that are going to poo-poo the idea of bipartisanship, but it's really key. It makes us a better legislative body. It produces a stronger Baltimore County. So, I thank all those who are sponsoring this motion, this, this resolution, and I look forward to the upcoming process.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Secretary, could I go back to the initial question? Have you had time to look up the vote from, I think it's 2020, 2021?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The original bill was Bill 319, and that bill was brought forth by the administration to establish a Citizens' Election Fund system in the charter. And that was passed by all the council members, except council members Jones and Crandall voted against that amended bill. In Bill, and then thereafter, and then, of course, the voters voted to approve the charter amendment to create the Citizens' Election Fund system. And then thereafter, excuse me, in Bill 10-21, which established the actual Fair Election Fund and the Fair Election Fund Commission, that bill was also passed as amended with only Mr. Crandall voting against at that time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I'm sorry, 102. It was 102.
Say that again?
It was 102-21. Sorry.
102-21. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Certainly.
Do any of the members have any additional, Councilman Jones, or is your light on? Okay. Why don't we move on? Do we have speakers on this, Ms. Bell Castro? So, I'm going to end my comments with how I started this discussion and just to state what a long, long, strange trip it's been. And with that, let's move on to the speakers. I appreciate you coming here and respect that you have interest, but Ms. Bell Castro, we'll call up the speakers. Have you signed up to speak?
I tried, so that's why I'm standing up.
Okay. We're going to have the folks that signed up to speak first, and then we'll come to you. Okay, thank you. Is your mic on?
Sorry. Our first speaker is, bear with me. Our first speaker is Sean McIntosh.
It's McIntosh.
Yes, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council Chair Petoka and council members. I am actually here in support of the resolution with the idea of perhaps an amendment. I testified in favor of expanding the council, as you know, but did want the map thrown out because I felt that the map was drawn with gerrymandering in mind and that it was unfair. Councilman Marks just talked about bipartisanship and battleground districts. I have no problem with bipartisanship. In fact, I think it's, it's what we need in Baltimore County. I think that, for the most part, this council has demonstrated that. I think that battleground districts are fair districts. Most of you have been in battleground districts. Councilman Catch has won repeatedly in battle, in a battleground district. If, if the council created a district that I plan on running in, that was a battleground district that had slightly more Republicans than Democrats, I'd be happy to run in that district because I am a bipartisan person, and I do believe that if it was a fair district, I could win. But currently, the way that map is drawn, it is not a fair battleground district. I would like an amendment to be written that throws out the current map and has this council start from scratch, so that the map is drawn without any preconceived notions about what it should look like and uses the criteria that are in the resolution to create fair and balanced districts. Then it truly is something that is bipartisan and fair and not gerrymandered. In the, in the conversations leading up to this and in conversations about the map in the previous testimonies, all of the council members talked about gerrymandering and how awful it was and how awful it was that the state gerrymandered maps. You are absolutely right. It is awful that the state did that. Two wrongs do not make a right. Please do not allow this map to stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh, and I would encourage you to get involved with the redistricting commission when it is formed. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Okay, Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Todd Warren, who is here in person.
I don't see Mr. Warren. Is he virtual, perhaps? Is he virtual, perhaps?
He registered as in person. Let me look on the list.
Okay.
I do not see him on virtually as well. Shall I move on to the next speaker?
Okay. Who's the next speaker again, Ms. Bel Castro?
Next speaker is, registered speaker is Chuck Franklin, who is also on virtually. However, I don't see Mr. Franklin on the WebEx.
Okay.
I'll go on to the next person, Robert Birch, who is here in person.
Mr. Birch, are you here, Mr. Birch? Okay. No one is responding to the hail?
Our next is, and I do apologize, Whitold Szczesinski.
Whitold?
Thank you, who is here in person.
Whitold? I don't see Whitold here. You're striking out, Ms. Bel Castro.
I know. I do apologize.
I wonder if that's...
Maybe they've registered for the wrong meeting. That is possible. I will go back and check the list.
Well, we do have Ms. McLendon here, who is in person, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. McLendon, why don't you come on up here and tell us what you got on your mind? And when you get up... Yes. I see the microphones on.
I have a microphone, so I'm standing up.
Oh, no worries. Not at all. I'm glad you did.
I wasn't sure how this would work, especially because I had not signed up and registered. I did try to register. I had been sent a link, but I wasn't able to do that, which is not really surprising because I'm not that good at electronics.
So, if you could state your name into the microphone for the record...
My name is Donna Lisa McLendon. I live in Baltimore County, one near our court, Owens Mills. I'm here today because I'm very concerned. I really want to see the map redrawn. I feel that if it is redrawn, I want to see the public have some input. And I'm really wondering, when this happens, when this commission starts with its meetings, will those meetings be open to the public? Another question, well, not really a question, but one of the things that I want to say is that I do believe that if we increase and change the maps, that there will be more minorities. There will be women. And I listened to you, Councilman Crandall, and I don't believe it's because people don't believe that you can do what you're doing in representing more minorities and women. But I think everybody understands that everybody wants to see someone there that's doing a job for them. Everybody wants to see a face. And the fact that there are no women, it's sort of appalling. This is 2024, and we don't have one woman on the council. I'm looking forward to the map being redrawn, but I do hope that the public will know about this and that we can have some input. And I don't think it's odd that a person wants representation and they want to see themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying that anyone is not representing others as the best that they can do, but I do believe it can be done better.
Thank you, Ms. McLendon. If I may, Mr.... Sure. Hang on. Hang tight, Ms. McLendon, for your comments. Just want to remind you, when I first was elected, I joined a council with two ladies and came in with an African-American man. And I don't think that, because the council has changed over that time, and that was three elections ago, I don't think that that was really something that anybody ever planned out. I know that Councilman Ortell's opponent was an African-American man, and a woman in the general. It was, well, the general was Tony, right? In the primary. And Councilman Marks was also challenged by an African-American woman. So, I don't think these things are kind of planned out by a map. And again, I just remember joining a council that had two women on it, and I came in with an African-American man. I don't think there's any conspiracy behind that. It's just how the voters had spoken in those particular elections.
I don't think that there's a conspiracy. That's not what I was trying to say. What I'm saying is I think that the map giving more areas that I think it's going to make it, I think it's going to make a difference, and I think everyone understands what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not saying that people aren't doing their best.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. You know, Ms. Bel Castro, I was just wondering if the folks that aren't here were thinking about a four o'clock public hearing?
That's what I'm thinking in my mind because, to your question, Councilman Ortell, when you sign up on this speaker registration, there's a drop-down list that they have to pick an item. I would think that if the item wasn't there and they were intended for that hearing tonight, I would think they would have reached out to us, but I had not heard anything. So, it's either your thing or the...
What I would say, Ms. Bel Castro, just for the sake of clarity, if you get any calls about that, please invite them to speak at the six o'clock hearing, and we'll have, give an opportunity for those people to speak.
Yes, absolutely.
And if we could get a list ahead of time, that'd be super.
Sure. Shall I move on to the next speaker?
Yes, thank you.
Our next registered speaker, oh, I'm using the wrong one. I'm sorry. You'll have to bear with me. I'm using two mouths. Our next speaker is Linda Dorsey Walker. Ms. Dorsey Walker, you are on. You may unmute yourself. Are you there? Ms. Walker?
Didn't hear you call my name. Okay. Well, as you all know, I'm Linda Dorsey Walker, and I took a position of being uncommitted on this particular legislation. Here's the reason why. Part of it was alluded to by Councilman Jones. As many of you know, as I've said, and I'm, let me just say, I want to thank Councilman Young for being one of the few people to actually give credit for us getting to this moment, to the citizens that worked hard as part of Vote for More. Many of you accused us for three years of having a political, strictly political initiative. That was not the case. We wanted to help bring you partially to where you are now. And Mr. Patoka, Councilman Patoka, I've asked you before to please give the full results of the restructuring committee report. It said a recommendation of nine with a road forward to a pathway that was identified to getting to 11 the minute we hit 900,000 population. So, please, please stop saying the same thing wrongly. I'm here because I want to talk about the technology that will be involved in doing the redistricting. I'm probably, no, I know I am, the only person in the state of Maryland that attended every single one of the governor's, this was under Governor Hogan's, redistricting committee cycle and every one of the legislative committee members' cycle, the only person. That gave me an opportunity to compare redistricting tools. The governor's side actually had a much better tool. It's a software tool called MapTitude. Instead of aptitude, it's called MapTitude. It is excellent. It is highly interactive. It allows any of you to have the opportunity to test and finagle with, from your own computer, adjusting, making small or large adjustments to a map without destroying the basic map. And it also, the way it was set up through the state, it allowed regular citizens like me and some of the people who have just spoken to submit their own ideas through MapTitude to the redistricting committee. And I certainly did submit several ideas, and one of which you're very familiar with. I started off early on submitting that we would have a standalone district called District 11A. And guess what happened? It came about thanks to the Justice Department. They said they thought that there was a need to have a supermajority minority district in that part of Baltimore County. What I hear from Councilman Jones and what I know from my community is that many people are concerned that the map that is currently drawn will undo that which we worked on so hard, I know I was part of it, in 2001 with the Justice Department, to try to get at least one supermajority minority district so that we knew for sure that there'd always be minority representation. What concerns me and many people in my community of all races that worked on this particular, on Vote for More, and when you write the history, please include the name of Vote for More.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey Walker. Your time has expired.
Excuse me. You let other people speak a little longer, so let me just bring this to a close.
Excuse me, Ms. Dorsey Walker. Thank you for your time. Let's move to the next speaker.
Our final speaker on this item is Sharonda Huffman, who is on virtually.
Hi. Thank you very much. My name is Sharonda Huffman. I am from District 7 in Essex, Maryland. And I spoke on this issue last, I guess it was week before last, and to what Ms. Dorsey Walker was stating, I think it is very important that we consider having specific tools like the MapTitude for the constituency to make recommendations on how they want to align the map. I also want to, previously, I talked about making sure that the people who are on the redistricting commission have some understanding of the Voting Rights Act, as well as, you know, how do you do the kind of technology in GIS and things of that nature, and also understand the neighborhoods. But I want to bring something that was brought up by the council member about bipartisanship. It doesn't say anything under the Voting Rights Act about bipartisanship. So, you shouldn't be dividing the map based upon Democrat, Republican. The things that you should take in consideration are race, so we don't have racial gerrymandering. And you should be taking in consideration that we're not facilitating vote dilution and then also taking consideration persons that might not speak English as their first language. So, all that being said, if you're looking at those items, please pick the best person, regardless if they're Democrat or Republican, within your constituency to represent on this commission. I also want to take in consideration, if there is a pending lawsuit because you're not doing it correctly, it would make more sense on the front end to spend a little bit more money on the education process and make sure it's open and transparent than continue to pay the private lawyers to fight a case. Thank you very much, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. Councilman Marks?
So, Ms. Huffman, I know you're a declared county council candidate, and when you talked about the council member who referred to bipartisanship, that was me. I represent Middle River, which I know is where you live. So, what do you think of the idea of bipartisanship in general? Was it important?
I absolutely do. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm on my phone, and I can see, all I see is heads. I do believe in bipartisanship, but that shouldn't be the main factor. To be honest with you, because I've worked in government, I always have to help both sides. And if you look at my testimony in reference to how I would like a county executive, that was one of the main, that was like the first thing I said.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. And I'm sorry, Councilman Ortell has a comment.
Hello, Ms. Huffman. How are you today?
Oh, wow.
Always good to see you. I agree. I think we really need to do a good job with educating the committee that gets, the commission that gets put together, and hopefully, they can take a good, hard look at this. One of the things that was created with the original map is there is a, Ms. Dorsey Walker talked about this, but there, I believe everyone knows this, but there is a second African-American friendly, candidate-friendly district in the Owens Mills-Randallstown area, and we were really proud of that because that's been asked for for a long time. I worked on a voluntary ad hoc committee that, with some people on the Liberty Road corridor back in 2015, and we were asking for that then, and this is one of the things that was created. And I hope, in the new map, that we continue to look for that district there. I've already seen an ACLU map that somehow seems to dilute that, and I'm confounded by that, honestly. But I guess we'll see how the commission looks at that, and I know we'll do a good job. And I hope everyone, including Ms. Dorsey Walker, will be proud of the process once it all gets done.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman.
That concludes the speakers for this resolution.
Okay. Let's move to HT. I saw HT here, AKA Horacio Tablada, AKA HT. And you might have some other names out there, Mr. Tablada.
Good afternoon, members of the council and Chair Patoka. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name, for the record, my name is Horacio Tablada, or HT, or High Test, or High Tie, or...
High Test, wow.
Or anything like that. I'm here today seeking approval of Resolution 4924 in support of the county's financial assurance plan, FAP, which is required by state law. We come every two years before the council since 2016, so this is our fifth time that we come on the every-two-years cycle. We are required by state law to submit this FAP, Financial Assurance Plan, to the Maryland Department of the Environment by December 31. As part of that requirement, we seek the resolution from the council. Basically, this financial assurance plan documents the work that we have done and the work to be, still needed to be completed. The main driver here is the, what we call the MS4 permit. And the MS4 permit is to help us achieve the base TMDLs. That part of the permit requires Baltimore County to complete 3,167 acres of impervious surface restoration. That's where you're actually removing the impervious surfaces and restoring that, 3,167. The good news is the Baltimore County has done very well on this, and we've done 80% of the work already. We've done 2,553 acres, and we still have work to be completed by the end of the permit, which is November 2026, two years from today. We'll get a new permit from MDE. Now, that doesn't come for free. It does cost everyone here, Baltimore County residents and citizens, at a cost of $66.7 million. So, since the beginning of this program in 2013, the county had provided $324 million for these restoration projects. And so, a lot of these projects include replantings, include stream water, stream restorations, shoreline restorations, a lot of projects, everything working together to achieve that B TMDL. So, in summary, the financial assurance plan is required to be submitted to MDE by December 31, not just for all the jurisdictions, and the county's in compliance with the state law. So, that's the good news. And we help us to track and to meet the MS4 permit requirements. So, with that, respectfully request your endorsement of the resolution, and with that... I'm here to answer any question. With me is Robert Hirsch, he's the manager that does coordinate everything at the county level, not just our department, but Public Works, planning, everybody works together as one, but he's the orchestrator.
Is Mr. Hirsch here?
Yeah.
Raise your hand, Mr. Hirsch. Okay, how you doing, Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, he's the person that coordinates everything for the Baltimore County. So a lot of credit goes to him.
Any questions for HT? Is Hitez, is that your hip-hop name?
No, well, that's, Wagner Gasoline had Hitez.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
Yes, Councilman Cash.
Unrelated, well, sort of related question. I know going door-to-door, I see some lawns that are artificial grass. Is that pervious or impervious?
Artificial grass is impervious.
Impervious.
Yeah, so we, not necessarily, there was a lot of debate on that, but I think when even schools that were placing them, it's not, it doesn't, it has a rubber mat, doesn't allow the water to percolate. There's people dealing with what's called pervious pavement, or something like that, a lot of them in the South, and we are working with MDE and some other counties how to address that, because they work very well at the beginning, but with time they become clogged, and then becomes impervious.
I saw a lot more than I have ever seen and was surprised. Thank you.
Okay, HT, so TMDLs, is that what we call our pollution diet? Is that could be known as a pollution diet?
Basically, the pollution diet is total maximum daily load, that's the maximum you can allow, kind of like the maximum you can eat in a day, so that's your diet. So, and it's set by within all the Bay states in the region under Chesapeake Bay office in Annapolis.
Thanks, I just want to make sure my understanding was correct. Thank you, Mr. Tablada.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker. Our speaker for this item is Raymond Heil, who is here in person.
Where's Ray? I don't, I didn't see Ray here. Mr. Heil is not here.
Let me check one line. It says in person, but... I do not see Mr. Heil online either.
HT, Mr. Heil goes by RH, Raymond Heil. Okay. You wrote it down, thank you. Okay, we'll move to the next item, and next item is Councilman Marks, Bill 49724.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In the 2024 legislative session, Maryland General Assembly enacted House Bill 43, which enacts, authorizes counties and municipalities to designate certain routes on where a person may operate a golf course. In fact, throughout eastern Baltimore County, there are many fairly self-contained neighborhoods where people have been doing this for years. What we're trying to do not only is to honor the spirit of this legislation, but to set out some parameters in which the county council can designate specific routes where these can be operated. The administration studied this for quite some time. Before I introduced this, I did discuss this with the police department and other folks from the administration. I've also had extensive conversations with community leaders throughout the east side, including the Essex Middle River Civic Council. So basically, what we're doing is we're allowing the county council to create a pilot program. And a pilot program has a specific period of time in which it's authorized. At the end of that period, the county council can basically kill the pilot program. What we would then do is there would be a separate resolution which would identify which routes where you could have golf courts operated. I will tell you that the reaction from many of the neighborhoods has been mixed. I have neighborhoods such as Hayward Park in eastern Baltimore County, which likes this idea. I have other ones which do not want to be part of the pilot program, and that's fine. That's what our job is to do, is to seek input from the neighborhoods we represent. So that's what we're doing here. We are basically creating the pilot program, and then it will take a successive resolution to actually designate the roads where these could be operated.
Okay, just for clarity, I introduced it as 9724, and I think, Councilman Marks, you were speaking on 10424. No worries, and that's no problem, I just wanted to make sure we're all clear. Okay, do any of the members have any questions or comments for Councilman Marks?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Crandall.
Thank you. Councilman Marks, happy to work with you on identifying some neighborhoods in the Seventh District. I know that you're already aware of some that might like to take part in the pilot program. However, I asked the question on the first reading. Mr. Secretary, do we have a definite, a legal definition of a golf cart? Because I have some pictures of some golf carts that, yeah.
Well, we do, Mr. Crandall, thanks to Mr. Phillips. We researched this a little further, and because there currently, or there was not in statute, any definition either at the state or local level of a golf cart, even though there had been legislation on the books allowing a golf cart. And fortunately, relatively recently, the state enacted a regulation specifically for this in Comer, and it does define a golf cart as a small, four-wheeled vehicle powered by a gasoline or electric motor with seating designed to carry more than one occupant, a maximum capable speed of not more than 20 miles per hour, a windshield, and a steering wheel. And it also defines what a golf cart is not, which, and it is not a motor vehicle as defined in the transportation article of the Maryland code, it is not a low-speed vehicle as also defined in the transportation article, it is not a highway recreation vehicle defined in the code, and it is not capable of being registered as any other vehicle classification in the transportation article. So it is specific that it is a relatively benign motor carrier or electric carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary and Deputy Secretary, for your research on that. Gives me a little bit of comfort, because there's some souped-up jalopy golf carts out there, and they're coming.
Very good. Does anyone remember the time, Mr. Councilman Crandall, or any others, Mr. Secretary? Remember a time when the bullpen pitcher would come into the game, and he would come in, someone would drive him in on a golf cart? Do you remember that, Justin?
Yes, and that golf cart would be shaped like the cap of the team.
Yes. And so now, the pitcher coming out of the bullpen has to literally be pedestrian and walk from the bullpen to the pitcher's mound.
I think the grounds crew must have gotten very upset over the years, putting tire marks into the...
Councilman Crandall?
Well, and bullpen pitchers back in the day were not necessarily in the best of Athletes have changed a little bit.
It's very true. Okay. Do we have a speaker on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I hope it's not a bullpen pitcher.
Ms. Huffman also registered for this bill as well. Ms. Huffman, you're back on to submit your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Sharonda Huffman, and I'm from District Seven in Essex. I did have the opportunity to attend, oh, you don't see me, to attend the Middle River Civic Association meeting. This, I guess it was, I can't even remember, it's Tuesday, it must be last week. Senator Saling did tell us that I think it's probably best before you move forward with this bill that you speak to him. I had some questions, because is it really necessary to have this? It was my understanding that there was another jurisdiction where they were restricting people from using golf carts. Golf carts, if there isn't a particular law against it, it doesn't mean that people can't use them now. However, it's going to basically put a tax on them because they then would have to get it registered, et cetera. So I guess I would also question, has it caused a problem as far as the police? It might not be something that we necessarily have to do, but it would require people to actually register a vehicle, and that will be at a greater cost when they may not even use the golf cart that often. I have seen it as a great thing to have, especially when people are doing these parades. I saw people were using them to, you know, take around people who might have been disabled or older. But, you know, if you have all these restrictions, they might not be able to use them because they might not be able to afford it. So I'm always wondering what the fees would be, and those fees will go to the state. So what is the feasibility for having all of these things if it's not really a problem now? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. Councilman Marks?
Well, I speak to Senator Saling quite frequently, and he's never expressed any concern to me about this bill. I also speak to Josh Signs quite frequently, and he's the president of the Essex Middle River Civic Council, and he gives me a lot of feedback on the different neighborhoods in the area that he leads, and I appreciate his comments. And to the last comment, I would just say, anyone who speaks to the communities along the waterfront in Baltimore County would realize that this is going to be something they care about.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Marks. Mr. Secretary?
And Mr. Chairman and Mr. Marks, I might be able to fill in a little legal blank. There was a state law that allowed these golf carts, and the only way you could have them was if there was enabling, or if there was legislation in the local jurisdiction. And there were state law for years that allowed it in just a few jurisdictions. I think Prince George's County was one, or no, no, not Prince George's, but I think Somerset County and another more rural county allowed it. But then most recently, the General Assembly passed a bill that the governor signed to allow it statewide, again, as an authorizing bill, but then it would be still up to the local jurisdictions to delineate exactly how that would be done. So in order for this to occur, it does require this bill if the council and the public wants to allow this in Baltimore County in the limited way that it will be allowed. And the law also specifically states that these vehicles are not to be registered because they are not motor vehicles in that sense.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, sir. I'm now told it was not Senator Saling who expressed any concerns with this bill. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional speakers? Okay, let's go to Councilman Marks, did you want to do 9724?
Yeah, let me talk about that one. So Bill 9724, I am going to withdraw this bill. I do think the county needs to look at the floodplain ordinance, but the administration has told me they will oppose this bill. I do thank the administration, they've moved forward with some of the grant funding that's critical for the Oliver Beach Improvement Association's community hall. That's a good short-term fix, I thank them for their help, but I do think there needs to be a long-term conversation about this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Councilman Marks, you're up again for Bill 10624.
Yeah, Bill 10624 would allow us to amend some of our regulations regarding mixed-use housing, to allow for greater use of disabled housing on the ground levels.
Okay, and that's county-wide?
It's a specific area of the county.
Okay. All right, now we're going to Mr. Terry Hickey. I don't see Mr. Hickey here. Okay, we have Ms. Sheridan is able to assist here.
Good afternoon, Chairman Patoka and members of the committee. My name is Heather Sheridan, I'm chief of homeless services with the county within DHCD. I'm here on behalf of the administration in DHCD again requesting a supplemental appropriation of state funds to the fiscal year '25 and '26 county budget through our homeless, our county homeless services program. The additional appropriation is detailed in Bill 101-24, represents additional state funds in the amount of $580,476 to support the homeless prevention and time-limited rental assistance, also known as rapid rehousing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Ms. Sheridan? Councilman?
One quick question. Hi, Ms. Sheridan, how are you? Sorry you had to sit through...
No worries.
...the debate. These organizations that we're, it looks like we're helping give funds to, that's, they're helping in addition to our own homeless shelter, is that correct?
Yeah, so these state funds were specific to certain allowable uses. Emergency shelter was not one of them. Homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, which is rental assistance, is what the county fund, or what the additional state funds were restricted to. So existing providers already doing that work within the county will receive additional funds to continue doing that work.
So this is just a continuation of what we're already doing?
And additional funds, yes, we're really excited about it.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now, that was the penultimate item, and now we have the item finale, and that is you, Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Council members, what is before you? This is the second reading of Bill 10324, which is our annual budget ordinance that, again, we discussed last week, everything in this ordinance, it's not new spending, it's spending that has been adopted in our county budget, and it's also been approved by the county voters. This gives us the ability to finance and issue bonds as needed throughout the calendar year. And again, it's an item that comes around this time every year, and we ask for your favorable approval. The details are, it authorizes us to issue up to $177 million in consolidated public improvement bonds, including, which includes $126 million for the school system, $31 million for the public works, $6 million for the community college, $5 million for agricultural preservation, $8 million for waterway improvements, and $1 million for refuse disposal. And these are based on our cash needs that we need to make each capital fund whole at the end of FY '25. From the metro side, this bill authorizes up to $241 in metro district bonds, which includes the issuance through the Maryland Water Infrastructure Revolving Loan Program. This is a subsidized program where the county obtains favorable interest rates. The bill authorizes the county to, the ability to purchase development rights through installment purchase program, or IPA. And the IPA program really encourages agricultural landowners to sell land, or land preservation easements to the county, and offers a variable favorable tax benefits for that, and we can issue debt for that purpose. With certain exceptions, the authority to issue these bonds and bands will expire next to December 31 of 2025. So our debt issuance plans, our bands are short-term notes that are sold in anticipation of issuing longer-term bonds at a later date, allowing us the flexibility in issuing debt if the yield curve is inverted, which currently, right now, it is flat. But if it is inverted, meaning that short-term rates are higher than long-term rates, the county may issue bonds rather than bands. However, that decision will be determined by our office and our financial advisors at the time of debt issuance. For historical purposes, we last issued $115 million in 20-year CPI serial bonds on July 24 at 3.64%, and $45 million in 30-year metropolitan district serial bonds at 4.12%. We estimate that we will issue up to $177 million CPI bonds at approximately 3.5%, and the 141 metro district bonds at about 4% in March of 2025 would be the target date. In addition, we expect to commit up to $100 million in metro district bonds through the Maryland Water Infrastructure Revolving Loan Program. Again, you know, last work session, we talked about the debt affordability ratios, and although that this, again, is everything that has been approved in our current budget, but we would be, we'll be looking at revising our debt to general service, debt service to general fund revenues from 9.5% to 10.5%, and debt per capita up to 3,000. So again, you know, as pointed out in the debt study, which is published online and shared with everyone, is the, you know, revising the debt service to revenue ratio would enable the county to accommodate our growing infrastructure needs, since credit analysts have been consistent in telling us that debt policy should not impede economic growth of governmental entities, and that debt service to revenue ratio would be consistent with debt policies of our peers. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share? Okay, and then Councilman Young.
Mr. Reed, thanks for meeting with me to kind of talk...
Mr. Reed, thanks for meeting with me to kind of talk this through, especially since I missed the first work session on this. I wasn't going to ask, that last piece that you just said, in your remarks before we opened up for questions, could you repeat that?
Sure, as pointed out in our debt study, revising debt service to revenue ratio, it enables a county to accommodate our growing infrastructure needs. So credit analysts, when we go through the rating presentations, they've been consistent in telling us that policy should not impede economic growth, economic growth within the county and our capital budget. So again...
Right, so, okay, but, all right, all right, so since you just stated that, out of the list that was sent, and thank you for sending it, of the projects that have been already approved and that we're trying to make sure we're back, we're backfilling, what are those projects are, and I'm not trying to be facetious here, I mean, like, we're getting into the weeds and you're talking about something that is, we consistently do, but then what are we, what are those projects specifically are tied to economic growth in the county?
Well, the economic growth is, you know, the, as we're taking on for the size of our capital budget, and we're a five-billion-dollar organization, for the size of what we are taking on from a debt standpoint, what they're basically selling, they don't want our debt limits to impede the infrastructure needs that we need. I mean, we have some major maintenance renovations going on. We're building two different schools and potentially more schools in the future. Those are all economic development.
Absolutely, and they shouldn't be understated, except for that there is a lot more than that in...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Right, right, so, I mean, but the caveat...
Yeah, I mean, the roads and everything that is in that capital budget is part of, part of that, so we don't want to constrain what we need to do to continue on, you know, building and having, you know, quality schools and quality government buildings, you know, into the future because of the limit. But it's something that we work through to, you know, our goals are to retain the AAA bond rating and continue the capital program at our current level and ensure that the debt service remains affordable.
Can you, one of the questions that was asked, I'll just sit here, but also one of my colleagues, again, I forget which, I apologize, I don't remember which one of us asked at the last meeting, but what portion of the county's current capital budget and programs we constructed over the course of 2025 through fiscal year 2030 timeframe? And the answer was indeterminable. Is there a particular reason it's indeterminable?
I mean, it's, you have any thoughts? It's hard to say. I mean, we'd like to say it's all going to be complete.
It's a, I'm sorry, what?
So, so...
Can't hear you, so, no, we can't hear you, Mr. Reed, but can't hear the folks in there.
You want to say that again, Bob? Okay. This is Bob Burrows, our chief of treasury management for the folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Thanks, Kevin Reed, for introducing me. What is in the '25 capital budget, '25 to '30 capital budget, did not include the '24 referendum that was just voted on? So that'll be added into the capital budget in 2026. So when we do our debt study, it will increase the amount of debt we issue, that's why it's...
Sure, but answer, but, okay, fine, then take out the part you can't determine, but the answer to the question is completely indeterminable about what will be or what was planned to be built between fiscal year '25 and '230. I think it's a general, specific question that can be answered. Am I making sense here? Like, we're asking what project can be built between fiscal year '20, '25, and '230 because we're about to approve a very large bond request here for approval? So I'm asking, what can we expect, see, be built between '20, '25, and '230? Shoot from the hip here, give me a ballpark here.
So let's say all of it.
Say again?
All of it. So let's say, I mean, it's hard to, we're going to estimate what we can and where we are in current, you know, building and construction timelines, but our goal would be to do it all. But I think it's, I can't give you a percentage right now. I mean, I don't know we...
I also understand, too, that we're here at the DAS and we're discussing it, too.
Right.
And you don't have exactly right in front of you, but I guess I'm, my response here is because the answer was indeterminable. So all I, what I'm hearing and what other people are seeing is that the county can't determine what projects we're going to build over the next five years, even though we're asking for funds to backfill, I think, well, we know right in the short term what we're going to build, but long-term, we're asking for increase in our debt limits from nine up to 10.5%, yet we can't tell where we're going to be by '23 or what we're going to have built.
So, so let's not, this, this, the item in front of us is what has been adopted and approved in the current budget.
Right.
So if your question is what is going to be that, we will move on everything unless something drastic happens, right? And everything that we've adopted, that the council's adopted in the capital budget, will move along as planned and as scheduled, assuming, you know, that if we get approvals and the funding rolls in and we don't have any major budgetary issues, which we don't plan to, everything that is adopted in the county budget will be built, right? I can't, I don't have a percentage right now on where that will be.
Sure.
At the end of this fiscal year or the end of next fiscal year.
Sure, but let's also be clear, too, because you all do a great job of making sure that we are spending within our limits and keeping within our mandatory, you know, guardrails. But you also don't make the determination of what gets funded, what doesn't, correct? That doesn't come from you. It comes from the executive side.
Correct.
Great. So I can also understand why you wouldn't be able to answer that specific question because that's not coming from you, right?
Correct, and I'm going to have a new boss in the next month that you all will be...
You're right, we will have, there will be somebody new here. So I guess one of the questions is then, why are we discussing it right now? What is the urgency right now to have this discussion about why, what is the implication of waiting until after we have this new person to make this determination with more information, maybe even including them and including you in this? What is the, what is the fiscal implication of doing that?
The fiscal implication is if we get into the winter, when we need to issue, start looking at issuing bonds, that I'm not going to, if the bond ordinance is not approved, right, and we have a favorable market condition coming, there's a process to this, right? I gotta, we gotta start submitting paperwork, we gotta go to rating agency presentations, we have to get a rating, there's a process to this, takes months.
Yeah.
This started, this bill started two months ago. So now, you know, this is a process. So if our financial advisors tell us in February, you know, now's a favorable environment, we've got a lot of different changes economically coming, we should, we should move on looking at issuing, and I don't have the ability to do that, that could hurt the taxpayers, right? We might pay more for interest rate, we won't have the flexibility, I won't have the flexibility with callable debt either as it comes due. So to, I think your concern, Councilman, is, is the, the conversation that we're going to have with the debt affordability committee via the spending affordability committee is about the debt limit. So, and that's separate than this, because if this is approved, again, we're, we have to, we have to do what we say we did, right? We had a capital budget that was approved, the voters voted on it, you all approved it, we submitted it, you all approved it. Now I'm asking for the ability to pay for it.
Right.
And we pay for it a combination of cash, and we pay for it a combination of issuing bonds and bands.
Right. Where's the timeline for the issuance of those bonds?
March, February, March.
February, March, got it.
That we estimate right now, I mean, if you ask me right now. February, March, right?
February, March, just for, okay, for that. If we were to, I'm not making a suggestion here that we're going to do something to risk our AAA bond rating or anything like that, but this is all tied together, and yet, while I am mindful of what our discussion over SAC is going to be, I'm also, and I'm tying them both together because they're intricately tied to what our decision will be and what the new county executive has in front of them to work with or not to work with. Once they get into place, and then we have to make a decision here whether, I guess we're flexible enough where if we've identified a project that we're working on, but we fell into tight, dire straits, we can absolutely make a decision on the fly to either delay a program or not pay for it or extend it out or not move forward with it. Like, the projections are that we're going to be at 11.5% by 2029 if we keep spending like this, if we keep spending. So if we're slowing it down, which isn't my determination or yours, but it's new county executives', then what are we talking about this right now for? Where we could slow down that discussion and slow down this potential spending or have the opportunity for the next county executive for the two years to make that decision? Instead of us right now talking about adding to the project that we've already agreed to do, and you've sent us a list, and, which is appreciated, and it has every district along here, like we always do, we get a list of projects that have my district number, Councilman Crandall's district number, everybody else, saying if we don't do this, then these projects may not get funded. As a carrot and stick approach, we usually just go here, we just go ahead and move forward with it. What I'm saying is that under these circumstances, with a debt report that came out, with a new county executive coming here, what is the urgency at this moment? I believe that I understand where you're coming from, you've been recommended and suggested to do this. I'm saying that I'm not getting that from you in terms of what I've been presented and the questions that were answered or asked by my colleagues to move forward and feel comfortable moving forward with this without having some input or discussion with the new administration that's coming in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, Councilman, but we have to, regardless of the, whoever, whomever the new executive is, I'm still going to have to do this in February, March.
Right.
And there's a process to that.
Right, and if we delay now, what is that, where does that put you off in terms of potential February, March? How far off?
I mean, you know, the bill's a little timeline, I mean, it's going to push us off into April, and then it could push us off, I mean, you know, into the summer. And, you know, it's, it's going to be, the council's, if we don't have the flexibility to do that and the time is right, that could be problematic, it could be problematic if I end up in the end of FY '25 with capital funds that are in the negative, because I don't have the flexibility to issue debt. So, you know, we rely, regardless, again, of who's coming in in January, this is, again, regular business that we have to do. Again, don't conflate it too much with the debt limit, it's a separate conversation. This has already been approved, right?
Right.
So I'm asking to...
We're looking for the flexibility to be able to get the bonds in February to pay for what you all have already approved as projects. And if we don't have it, when they get ready to go for the bonds, it could cost us more or we would have to stop the projects because we cannot pay for them. This is what was already approved in the capital budget, nothing new, what you all, what we presented to you all, what you already approved.
Right.
It's just coming now so that we can have the ability to go for the bonds at a good rate when our financier tells us it's time to go. Because it takes time to pull something together and get it in front of you all. We can't just go the week before and come before you all and say, hey, I need you to approve this. There's a process we have to go through with your staff.
Of course.
In order to get it in front of you.
I, and it is not, we had a private conversation answering questions back, which I appreciate it. It is not fair to sit here and go through data that was sent to me in a spreadsheet where I'm not in your office, I will commit to this, you all do a great job of making sure we spend inside the guidelines that have been presented to us. I see cash on hand, and I do, that's why I'm asking the implication of slowing down and what that means fiscally, because while you may have funds committed, we don't see that.
Okay, the cash on hand, Councilman, again, we've shared the work paper, that isn't general government buildings, not in school system. We're not going to be issuing debt for general government. So again, it's coming down to the 126, again, that we have for the school system is what they're requiring based on their cash flow and based on what was approved in the budget. So I don't have flexibility to move cash between funds.
Right.
You know, that's...
Yep, which is why I didn't want to get into the conversation with you specifically because we started the other day, and you don't have in front of you, and we didn't prepare for this conversation back and forth. It was important enough to have, I think I belabored the groups enough time, I think some other folks had other questions, though. Or maybe they didn't, I just thought they did, so.
Do any of the members have any additional questions? Councilman Orteg?
I just had one. We talked about it the last work session, that we'd have a list of the projects, the capital projects that are included in this.
Yeah, I sent that over, you should have that.
It came today. Do we get it? Okay, I didn't see it. Okay, I'll look for it, sorry.
Councilman Marks?
I just want to thank Councilman Young for bringing up that issue of the urgency, and we have stormy weather ahead of us. I think the administration, the council both recognize that. So thank you for that dialogue.
Any additional questions? I just have one comment slash question, I guess. So I understand that you want the flexibility with the bonds, to purchase the bonds at a good rate for Baltimore County. But I will state something that was in, that the, in the council-approved master plan 2030, and also that's been, I think, interest to a number of council members, while there's, we're talking about flexibility on the purchase of bonds, or the sale of bonds, I'm sorry. But in the capital budget itself, I think there's too much flexibility, and projects are in bulk accounts. And I think that there needs to be greater specificity, greater predictability, greater planning for what is in year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, and year six. And I understand that year five and six is difficult to envision, but, you know, for example, let's take the purchase of 305 Washington Avenue. We never knew that there was a need for office space because it never appeared in the capital budget. So this governing body, the council, wasn't armed with information that there was a pending need for additional office space for our county agencies. It just came up at the end of a, at the end of a fiscal year, and then, I'm not going to rehash the condition of the building and all that, but just it should have appeared out in year two or three, made its way up into the capital, but that's just one example. And I think that the more information that we have in terms of when a project is going to be designed, when it's going to be constructed, in each of the six years, because we do a six-year plan, and we review it every year, the more we have that information, the better government we are, all of us, because the executive side, we can tell our communities that this project is going to be done in two or three years, or in year three or year four. And we used to do it. I would encourage you to review the capital budgets in the 1995 to 2005, and you'll see a level of specificity that is remarkable compared to the amount of specificity we have today. Yes, absolutely. Madam Cao?
Sure. So we are in the process right now of preparing for the FY '26 budget. I have no problem coming to you all and telling you all the needs of this county and the revenue that we have coming in. No problem. Would love to talk to you well in advance, because I think what you're going to see is that the revenues that have been coming in is here, the needs are here. For many years, we've only done maintenance. I currently have a list before me, not before the CE, before me, that I'm going to give to the new CE, of needs that are like this. And right now, the only thing that we can afford to do is the maintenance on some and continue to pay for those that we've already started. All of us have needs and wants, but remember, the revenue is here. Over time, CARES is gone, OPERA is gone, and the material cost has increased, we have CPI on projects that have come forward. Capital projects don't just start today and then get into the budget tomorrow. We have a whole design process that takes place, and then there's years out that you have to build. That's why it's a capital project, because at least. But I am more than willing to come to a meeting with you all and show you the needs of the county as to where we are right now, so that there's no surprises. And if we need to do that on a monthly basis, I'm open to doing that, because the needs are here, the revenue is here.
I understand that, and thank you, Ms. Walker.
I wouldn't miss if I didn't tell you that.
I guess the question I'm, or the situation I'm posing, let me give you a hypothetical, I'm just making this up. Let's say we understand that we need additional correctional space. And it's something that we, you know, working with Director Pesterfield and our state partners, we understand the trajectory of what we can handle, and this is all hypothetical, I'm making this up, but let's say we realize that we're running out of space and we need more space. Then in year six, we might have the construction of something that would address that need. In year five, we might have the design funded, and we may realize that it pushes out or it moves up, but if it's out there, it, the council, the public, we all become aware that there's a need for something out in the near future. In the perfect world of capital budgets, and I know that there's, it doesn't actually work this way all the time, and that it would start out in year six, then it would move to year five, year three, year two, year one. Baltimore County, since we do the two-year bond ordinance, we know pretty clearly what year one and two is going to be. And then we have a projection of what three and four might be, and then a long, a long-term vision for year five and six. I just think that that's, that would be really helpful to us in making decisions when a project pops up in year one, if we've understood it to be a need in the, in the out years.
Okay, so that's fair. One of the things that I will tell you as a prime example, yesterday I met with your staff. The voters have voted to bring in two new council people. That is a capital project that just came because the voters just decided on that. So now I have to find money and space and reallocate some things because we know what the space looks like. That's a prime example. looks like. That's a prime example of a need that is going to be a part of what we're talking about. But you see how those come up from-
I understand.
...every different way. So that's how we're building the program as it comes along. We plan as best we can for what's getting ready to happen, but then you have things like that that have now come up, that we now have to figure out how to enlarge this space. We got to figure out how to get extra cars. We got to figure out how to get the staff upstairs. So those are capital projects that come to play. But again, be it bi-monthly, quarterly, I'm more than willing to come because it's an open book. We meet with the agencies and they bring the capital projects to us that need to be covered. And typically, it's sewer. We're not building any new buildings. It's sewer. The new buildings that you need, you have police, you have fire, have needs and things like that. So it's all stuff that I'm more than willing to come and have a conversation about.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Crandall?
I'm going to keep my foot.
Okay, Councilman Crandall's, did you have a count, a question, Councilman Jones? No additional comments? Okay, thank you all very much. I think this concludes the meeting. And let's move, move on. We have a, welcome everybody back to the six o'clock meeting. John Lee, did you see my text?
Yeah.
Because I just wonder if you and many others were in the same situation.